All right, I have seven o'clock. And we will call the evening to order. Couple things on the agenda for tonight. First one is we'll have a public hearing regarding the proposed amendment to our highway mixed use district. Just a couple quick housekeeping items that we kind of go over every time we have a public hearing. First off, if you haven't signed in, please sign in on the sheet up here at the front. My name's Trey White. I'm chairman of the City of Long Island Planning Commission. The purpose of this public hearing is to contain citizen comments and concerns on the proposed amendment to the highway mixed use zoning district. And for those that are kind of wondering, we're having a public hearing first and then we will move into our regular scheduled planning commission meeting. Before we get started on the public hearing, I'd like to give a brief overview on how we intend for meeting flow. First, we'll have the presentation of the proposed amendment. After the proposed amendment is presented, then we'll open the floor for public comment concerns. There are a few rules we'd like to follow for the public comment time. First off, if you don't mind, when you have, if you have a comment during the public time, please come to the mic up here at the front. We ask that you state your name and address so we can see, you know, kind of confirm you're a resident of the City of Long Island. We'd ask that each speaker keep their time to two to three minutes. And not that I expect it by any means, but we do ask, you know, to state that unruly behavior is prohibited. Please be courteous and considerate with your language and actions. After the public comment time is completed, we will adjourn the public hearing meeting. And that's when we will transition into our regular scheduled planning commission meeting. Please note, we have a public hearing prior to our planning commission meeting, so the planning commission can take all comments into consideration. All right? Okay. As we go into the public hearing, this is a little bit different. Most of the time, we're having public hearings regarding conditional uses. Tonight, we're having a public hearing to comply with section 3.3, which is the amendments for the current zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment would include the following. In reference to section 5.2, 0.3, 0.1 of the current zoning ordinance, which is a highway mixed use district, we would be moving many storage buildings from permitted uses to conditional uses. We would amend the zoning ordinance as well to replace all occurrences of many storage buildings with the term self-storage facility. And then we would amend section 2.2 to include the following definition for self-storage facility. It would be defined as a building or buildings providing individual private storage spaces of varying sizes leased on individual leases for varying periods of time without outdoor access to individual units and/or storage yards for large items, equipment, or vehicles. That is the proposed amendment to the highway mixed use zoning district. We will open the floor for any public comment this time. Well, that was pretty simple. If there's no public comment, we will close down the public hearing for the night. And we will transition into our regular scheduled planning commission meeting. Ryan was still on time?
Nope.
All right. Close the public hearing at 7:05. We'll be working at 7:05 for a public hearing. We will now enter into time for the planning commission. I'll call the planning commission meeting to order at 7:05. First order of business is to approve amendments for meetings in June. We have two meeting amendments to approve. One, first one is from June 13th. Present, Ryan Sims, Ken Williams, Gina Branson, Trey White, and Will Hightot. We called the board at 6:11. One item of business, which was the conditional use of the mobile home on Main Street. Mr. Clemens owns a property at 968 Main. Does not understand that you had a comment, Mr. Clemens did, regarding the 200-foot driveways, which was regarding the spacing there. He had further comment related that it's looking at buying this place. You could bend requirements for first three requirements, size of dimensions of mobile home, et cetera. Mr. Clemens wants to sell the property to the elderly lady so she can live in the city. As a comment by Mr. White, we are here to recommend regarding the, we were having a special call this, the planning commission meeting. To make a recommendation to the city council regarding the conditional use of the mobile home. Kim stated the definition of conditional use for our current code recommends that we deny the conditional use. Gina stated that she is absent for last meeting. And she asked about the concerns that were brought up at her last meeting. Trey had the following comment, only one person spoke at the last meeting against the placement of the mobile home. Gina had another comment, other than driveway issue or other concerns. And then the driveway issue was discussed a little bit regarding the 200-foot spacing on the guidance. We're going to get back on our tone. There was a call for motion, there was a motion made to deny the conditional use permit that was made by Kim Williams, when Will Hightot seconded. No discussion, four in favor, one abstained, one opposed. The meeting was adjourned at 6:24 PM. Those are the meeting minutes from June 13th.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second upgraded. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from June 13th, you can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Have the Long Island Planning Commission minutes from June 27th. Members present, Trey White, Gina Branson, Ken Williams, Ryan Sims, Brady and Glenn. The meeting was called to order by Trey White at 7:00 PM. This is a public hearing regarding Landmark Baptist Church Family Life Center. Joe Lawrence presented off a path landmark church. The church plans to build a 60 by 75-foot bed building with concrete floor, including kitchen, classrooms, meeting area, and a restroom. The proposed building will have an awning built along to the entrance and will have a roll-up garage door at the back. Floor was open to public comments. There were no public comments. 7:06 public hearing portion of the meeting was closed. Trey White called the regular meeting of the Long Island Planning Commission to order at 7:06. When I read the minutes for the meeting, Ryan Sims made a motion to approve, which was seconded by Brady. Motion was passed unanimously. No old business, the new business. Landmark Family Life Center, the motion was made by Gina Branson, seconded by Ryan Sims to grant variance to allow two principal buildings on the same lot to approve the proposal for future review of platte. Requiring the platte to show the following items to propose setback, or property setback lines, with land state areas, property boundaries. Motion to amend the motion was made by Ken Williams, seconded by Brady to add the requirement for parking, handicap parking spaces to be shown on platte. The amendment, the motion was approved unanimously. The motion is amended, passed unanimously. Then I had a couple announcements. End of the meeting was adjourned at 8:04 PM.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Ryan. Do we have a second? Have a second by Todd. Any further discussion on the meeting minutes, June 27th? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from June 27th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second.
There are none. Passed unanimously. Thank you for that. All right, the old business landmark church revised site plan review for the family life center. We can our packet that we received from Kelly. We had the revised updated drawing. We've got driving around to Florence, updated drawing. And we also had a letter from Trey Foster and his recommendation of approval of a variance of the Long Island Planning Commission for bill of permit to be issued on the revised site plan. Is there any discussion of what would be the, as far as the drawing or the item of business denied?
I think they made, they did everything we asked for.
Okay. Any other comment or would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Ryan Sims to approve the revised site plan review for the family life center at Landmark Church.
Second.
We have a second by Gina. Any further discussion? All right? All those in favor of approving the revised site plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Revised site plan is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All right, we proceed into new business. Discussion on storage units, the inclusion of conditional use. I'll go back over my presentation to our original comments. So we will be considering the proposed amendment to the highway mixed use zoning district. And this is proposed amendment. We had, we held a public hearing, there were no comments during the public hearing time. The, we will be making a recommendation as part of, we're going to refer to section 3.3 of the zoning ordinance. If we want to make an amendment for the zoning ordinance, our, we're tasked with, as a planning commission, to make a recommendation to the city council. So that's what we would be doing if we went forward with this. Okay? In reference to section 5.2, 0.3, 0.1, which is the highway mixed use zoning district, we would be moving many storage buildings from permitted uses to conditional uses. We would also be amending the zoning ordinance to replace basically the term many storage buildings with the term self-storage facility. And the definition of self-storage facility is a building or buildings providing individual private storage spaces of varying sizes leased on individual leases for varying periods of time without more access to individual units and/or storage yards for large items, equipment, or vehicles.
I have a question. You've got lease, does that mean, what if they own them, you know, not lease?
So from a definition standpoint, if a, and I'm thinking about that here, all right. So if somebody's bringing a, a facility to us for, to develop on a piece of property, that's why we come to the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay? Then we would have the question and kind of inquire as far as how that would structure.
Okay, so you're not talking about existing storage buildings, like storage buildings?
Yeah, would you mind that, do you mind that say who you are?
I'm Peggy Parks, 48th South Church Street, Long Island.
Okay.
I have a storage building, so I'm wondering how this affects me.
It would not affect you, that would get grandfathered in. Any existing thing would be grandfathered in.
Okay.
And this is where, I don't know what property, the highway mixed use zoning, so this would be property only in the highway mixed use district?
I'm on Church Street.
Do you have a single storage building or?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a single storage building?
Yes.
Or do you own one that's a part of a large complex?
Oh, no, it's just a storage.
So this doesn't refer to that?
Okay.
Yep.
It's like a multi-unit type facility?
Okay. I didn't know, when I saw the meeting come out, I wasn't sure what it was about, that's why we came.
Yeah.
And it only contains 64 highway.
It only contains 64?
And Eagle Street.
Yeah, and Eagle Street, 107, so.
Okay. The main thoroughfare is through Long Island.
Sure. If there, if you get on our city website, you go to the planning, there's some maps, there's a link to some maps. And on that zoning, it'll show you where the highway makes use.
I've seen it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, fine. But this doesn't affect the average person with a storage building in their backyard or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
In my history with this, and I'm, because it's kind of, I know we've kind of discussed a few of these items, but we had a, an instance kind of before the planning commission before, where we had a couple residences that were on either side of a piece of property that were in the highway mixed use district. They were looking, there was a person that was looking to develop that in between two houses.
I see.
And, you know, in moving from a permit to a conditional use, we would have some, is that a right application for a self-storage facility to go in, you know, that actual location?
I see. Thank you.
Any thoughts?
The wording, so the wording on that.
Yes.
So it said buildings or buildings. So would it not be building? It's because it could also just be property. I mean, so like if it was just parking.
Correct.
So, I know, but it says it in the, like, the later part of it, I agree, but in the first.
And then it also talks about outdoor storage yards for large items, equipment, or vehicles. And this, and this definition, and I don't know if that correct, Stephen Craig brought this. This was actually, the self-storage facility is what the UDO references.
Right.
Okay? And there's two definitions within the self, within the UDO for self-storage facility. One is an outdoor access self-storage facility. And one is the, I guess, more recent development of the indoor, you know, the conditioned self-storage facility. This definition right here applies really for the outdoor access type self-storage facility. Could we consider, you know, broadening that term, you go to also apply it indoor potentially? But it seemed pretty, that that wasn't a bit more common for us in the highway mixed use district.
What would be accomplished by moving this from the way it already is? What is the motivation or the outside of that?
Control the location where they live. That's the reasoning.
So I, when we had the meeting with four, had two houses on either side, and somebody was trying to develop a piece of property between the two houses for many storages, right? And I don't know if that was the right application. We didn't have much of a say in because it's a permitted use. And.
So in that scenario, they were going to be developing it almost all the way to the road? Or as far as, as these setbacks would allow them? So then neighbors wouldn't be able to walk out and see each other anymore, or even see the houses. They would both be seeing the side of storage.
Now, when you hear, you want to hear about, take the main, where, so it was probably the button up next to the school, I don't know. It was between the two houses. It was that piece. So there was concern about it being close to the school, just the location.
So it's not technically an effort to try to keep self-storage?
No.
Facilities from being on the highway at all?
Correct. Correct, that's why we go from permitted to a conditional use, because, you know, at the end of the day, there's, you know, I don't know, the, I believe many storage buildings, the only permitted use that they have zoning wise would be in the highway mixed use, right? I don't know about, I'd have to go back and see if anything, so anything that comes into industrial is going to be a conditional use, right? So it's more, let's just kind of, we're trying to control a little bit the location. Because when you have highway mixed use, you have a combination residential and commercial development, right?
So we want to be able to have a combination. And we want for, for instance, a person who owns a property or who owns a self-storage unit development, they need to be able to have disability, they need to be able to have that sort of thing. So I just want to make sure that we're moving toward being able to say no more self-storage units at all.
To me, that's a market demand thing, you know, as far as, there's a lot of, I will say there, from what I've seen, just looking at other codes in other municipalities, there's not many of them that allow many storages, kind of what you would call their, their downtown area. It's more kind of out than rather than being downtown.
Our settings.
Right? But at the same time, are we to that point yet? I'm worried, that's why I was saying over permitted to conditional use.
And this just allows a layer of protection, because there are plenty of other options on those, whereas like in this one scenario, it would protect the homeowner on either side.
Yeah.
Well, I question then, why are we calling it highway mixed use? We're not, that mobile homes in, they die that, now going to buy this. Do we just need to change highway mixed use? It's not mixed use anymore. It means that definition of it. Because it's not, obviously, we're not, we're not mixed use. It's not highway mixed use, we don't allow mobile homes. Now we're not going to allow storage facilities. Do we change that definition?
We, I think the, is there more, I think, from a, a development standpoint, and I believe this probably came back from some of the surveys that are we trying to encourage commercial development? Sure. So there would be, there would be many storages commercial. Yeah, true. It would be commercial.
It's commercial, it's a tax basis.
So it would be.
What if it was your house and your dad's house, and someone was trying to come in right next to you?
They own the thing, whatever they want to do.
Between you and your dad all the way up to the front.
You know, I'd rather have that as McDonald's beside it. I'd rather have a mini store, so I wouldn't have to smell hamburgers every day. I'd rather have a mini store right beside my house, as I would at McDonald's or Wendy's on each side of it.
Well, in that scenario, I feel like.
I think from, from that standpoint, when we had, when the development came to us on the many storages, the neighbors, they were going to be, they decided they did want, right? So at least with the conditional use, we would hear their input from that standpoint. So does that give us a little bit of flexibility, you know, like if you can't do it in a city?
Yeah, like saying, if Wendy's want to come, put it right beside my house.
Right.
I wouldn't rent, I don't have to smell hamburgers and fries every day.
And you'd like to have boys to say?
I'd like to have the boys, but that'll make it hurt.
Right.
You know?
And if we do move to the mixed use, at least they did need a little help, it would hurt. It's not a whole other problem.
I understand, I understand, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. You know, it's a slippery slope. You know, you can't deny everything up and down either. And, you know, if they own the property, they get to build on it. That's why it's highway mixed use, that's a big deal. You build a house along 64, you're taking a risk, because there could be something built right beside it. You know? And nobody wants anything beside them. I didn't want quite a hollow beside me, I'd love for it to stay candid. I didn't want that, but did that, did that stop anything? Just hold on, I don't want it, don't, you know? You see my point?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it is awesome, you know? And I'm not saying this is not right, because the city councils can still allow.
It's just recognition.
It's recognition, and I get that, I understand. I'm just throwing, you know, you just can't just start. Every time somebody comes in there, says they don't want this beside them, we can't, well, you can't have a, well, now you can't have Minnesota. Now you can't have this, but you can't have that.
But most towns, most cities don't have a mobile home in their downtown. Do you know of a city that has one?
Well.
It's not grandfathered.
I hear what you're saying, but the price will, this will drive, the price this will drive that out. If you ever get an industry, that will drive that out. There was all in Conway 30 years ago. Yes, there was, where Croker was, and all that, that was a big mobile home park, right there.
They're still around it, yeah.
Yeah, there's a big mobile home. So yes, 20, 30 years ago, there was. Conway had one where Croker is, now that was a big mobile home park. You know?
I grew up in one, we had a mobile home park right downtown.
Yeah. We owned one there, 64 and Sherman Lane. The city was on us, constantly get rid of it. Then when Sonic decided they needed a place, that's what drives the mobile home park out. When like Sonic wants in, that's what drives. I'm just saying.
Yes, sir.
But that was also more located in downtown. Well, Croker on Oak Street, and noise and like, yeah. Yeah. It's like, you know, still the commercial district.
And I'm okay, I'm just, I'm okay with, with doing, the city council can do it. I just hate Keith dumping everybody on the city council.
So I believe like all this was addressed, like, with us to change, potentially changing the UGIL stuff, like, Adam does a work session. That's what Trey is working on and stuff. And I mean, we're, in the previous meetings, we've already identified, we want to kind of establish a commercial district more centered downtown.
more centered downtown. So that's where, you know, we can't deny everything, but I know we're in that process of change. So what are we doing in the middle? What would change in this process?
Any other comment? Thoughts?
Also, we kind of thought about, and I don't know the process, but the moratorium choose that versus trying to go with more events and.
I, I think Mr. Coates' point, you know, if somebody wants to develop a piece of property, and I've told you, you said put a moratorium on something, right? Then you do, because I'm, I brought that up too, you know, hey, are we, are we over, oversaturated with storage buildings? You know, I don't know if that, that there are market demands. And so, but at the same time, so I don't know, I, I kind of backed off that more I thought about it. You know, if we go, I just want, I'll be honest. And listening to the neighbors of that piece of property, if it will be developed, depending on they had storage buildings outside them. They didn't have it up here, I didn't know if that was the greatest location right there that it used to be a school or wish we had it better. At least we would give it as a conditional use, we could put additional conditions on it. That would, that would be a little more stringent maybe than what we just have, but in just highway mixed use standards, right? And so that's why I was kind of in favor of going from permitted to conditional. And, you know, because we do have, we are going to have in that zoning area right now until we, if it ever falls into something different, we are going to have a mixture of commercial and residential. And we can keep the commercial with the commercial and residential with the residential. Should not help, you know, at least let the neighbors have a voice in it, right? That's my take on it.
Well, I mean, just to be somewhat of a, I understand, I, I understood their concerns and I didn't like negate or anything else, but they have been on a house on the main thoroughfare. I mean, so they run the risk of it being something no matter what it is. So, you know, now as far as location of a storage building that close to the main intersection, you know, yeah, I, I, I see that maybe that would be in the ideal spot. I mean, like I said, I see that side of it as well, but I mean, like I said, it could be anything else and they're not, I mean, honestly, they're not going to like it either. You know, so I mean, I understand their issues and I understand that, and, and town may approve to them or, or, you know, there's all kinds of things like that. So it's, it's not, you know, I think if it was anything, that issue is still going to be there. And not to negate it or anything like that, but it's just, you know, there's, there's going to be something built there at some point and that, you know, they have those houses there, they're still there.
True. If there's a flower shop, they wouldn't like it.
Possibility, yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, just any additional traffic and stuff like that. I mean, I get it, but.
Right. It's the majority, it's the majority of our sentiment that we get from public hearing is that nobody wants anything next to them to change. They want the grass to stay the same, the road to stay the same. They want it exactly as they bought it. And I just don't think that's realistic for us as a planning commission to think that we can accommodate that for everybody. We are sympathetic to that, but we don't want no waste. We don't want go carts. We don't want the smell of the barbecue. We don't want this, 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 this. Nobody does. But if people are going to be able to prosper, property owners, business owners, future business owners, we have to make a path or a way for them to do that. And I don't think highway mixed use can suddenly become highway ma, uh, residential here, business here, unless you wanted to, and we've kind of already carved out a, a very much, a very, uh, specific commercial district in the village area, which isn't being developed to those, you know, per that yet. But we kind of have got a very specific and very limited range and scope there in that area already, which allows for residential and commercial still, even in that development. Um, I, I think if we're moving towards something that allows us to, um, make conditions and requirements that makes things safer for children at the school, that makes things safer for people pulling out of a busy intersection, I think that's a good thing. But we're never going to be able to please neighboring property owners. We can sit up here every week and we're not going to please them. And I hate that because I, I like to keep everybody happy. I, I strive to do that in my job and my family. I try to keep everybody happy. But if that's our goal is to try to keep neighbors from being, uh, having something beside them that they don't like, that's not realistic.
Other comment or, and would anybody like to, you know, do we table this? Do we, for future consideration? Do we? Not take up, you know, it seems like there's discussion on either side of it.
I think the biggest discuss, I mean, it's, it's, it's the, the purpose. So, you know, as long as, I, I think, I could be, I'm not speaking, just like speak. If it was meant to set some extra standards on them or some, you know, you know, some restrictions or things to go by, that's not, I don't think that's a terrible thing. As long as we don't use it to block them or, or things like that. I mean, actually, I'm not opposed to the, you know, do, having additional measures to protect, you know, neighbors or things like that of that nature, but, um, what it said, it, it's a dumb left short because there's a business deal like ending on this now. So it's just kind of, it's, you know, it, it's, it's at that point now and it's kind of like the decision's made is going to make or break a deal that's already been started, you know.
And I think we have, you know, do we, and, and here's one thing I don't know is, does commercial property or just property adjacent to developments like this, you know, is this a property value enhancer? And, you know, that's what I don't, I don't know. You know, that is, can be, can, or, you know, I don't know if somebody was selling a house or we, that dropped aside the mini storage.
It would go commercial if it sold anyway, I would think. Um, possibly, potentially.
I don't know that it was wide enough to be a commercial. I don't remember.
And maybe, I mean, honestly, you start putting in commercial developments. What does that do to that piece of property? I don't, you know, I think that's just kind of the subjective answer, I don't know. I mean, let's say you're all on right then.
I don't think it's intended to make or break deals. I think it's meant to, more like Trey said, to, um, be able to put stipulations that might protect adjacent property owners. Maybe they have to put up a.
Something that would entertain me, yes, yeah, I agree there.
Any other comment, thoughts? Again, we're testing, making a recommendation if we decide to go forward with it to the city council. Anybody want to step down and say, uh, I think we should do this?
Yeah, I think we should. Like, I mean, y'all know me, I like to action stuff. Like, I feel like we just keep postponing a lot of these things. I mean, I agree it's not to push people out, it's to put those, um, decision points and stuff in there to not protect. I mean, it's like right now as a citizen, we don't really have a true say. It's a permitted use. I mean, it comes in as it goes, you know.
It is not on the deal. Any other thoughts? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
They want to make a motion to approve the moving from permitted uses to conditional uses as well as redefining remaining storage buildings to self-storage facility. Okay, one second. We have a, a motion by Kim and a second by Bray. And this is a, to approve this, really not to approve this, it's more of a recommendation to recommend to the city council, to city council to approve this change, okay? So this is a motion made to, well, motion made to recommend to the city council. All ready to begin, just so be sure. We will be moving many storage buildings from permitted uses to conditional uses. And we will be amending the zoning ordinance to replace occurrences of the term many storage buildings. And replace that to term self-storage facility. Self-storage facility will be added as into section two point two, we'll start that additions. And if you find this follows, a building or buildings provided, providing individual private storage spaces of varying sizes leased on individual leases for varying periods of time of outdoor access to individual units and or outdoor storage yards for large items, equipment or vehicles. You have a motion and second. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Is this, we have a motion and second, so we can discuss this.
Yes.
The wording in the, uh, talking about, um, the properties being leased and properties that have outside access.
Yes.
So what about a self-storage facility that has inside access, like climate-controlled facilities?
It would be excluded.
They would be excluded from this and still remain in the permitted uses?
Or, uh, the wording, that's not a petition.
So if, if we recommended this change to the zoning the way it is and the city council approved it the way it's written and a developer brought us a, an enclosed climate-controlled storage unit development with indoor access, would that be a permitted use or conditional use?
My take on that is, well, there's two things. The, in referring to the U D O, it, it definitely explicitly states both definitions, indoor access and outdoor access. So it has a definition that's eighty percent the same as what this one is, but it says has, does not have, uh, individual out, or does not have outdoor access to individual units.
Okay. So in a, uh, if we adopted the U D O in a, in a future time, then that might be more inclusive?
Yes, or we can, or we can go ahead and just add both definitions.
We don't have the opportunity to add them.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can add both definitions right now if you wanted to. Or we probably reword this definition to include both. If somebody brought that to us right now, it would be, how would we interpret that? To me, we would interpret that being really close to a self-storage facility, which is a conditional use. And it's just kind of a.
Technicality.
It's, uh, would we, you know, would you allow them to, would we adopt that as a, uh?
We could just, we could strike that from the definition where it says outdoor access, where you could add wording. Oh, how does the U D O have it?
You have that over here. Kim or Bray?
Yeah.
Sometimes that's a higher-end facility.
It is.
That's being brought, but if the concerns are about the setbacks, then that wouldn't change whether it's indoor or outdoor. If the, if the main concern is about the setbacks with the neighbors and things like that.
And I, could we look at it as a variance? I think you could look at it as a variance if somebody had to bring one, but just a single definition, right? Because it would be, rather than having outdoor access, we'd be having a conditional door. But if we're going through the trouble of actually going off this, maybe it's hard now. I can prove it just to go ahead and put both definitions in there and call it what it is. It's, y'all looking forward, it's under the uses, you have your.
Okay.
You mean?
Here, I hope not well enough to just look right there.
I'll fill it up.
All right, I got it.
And, go ahead, Bray.
All right. So it says self, self-storage facility, no outdoor access or storage. Facility providing individual private storage spaces of varying sizes leased on individual leases for varying periods of time within a completely enclosed building or buildings without any outdoor access to individual units or outdoor storage units, or storage yards, sorry. Self-storage facility with outdoor access and or storage. A building or buildings provided individual private storage spaces of varying sizes leased on individual leases for varying periods of time with outdoor access to individual units and or outdoors, outdoor storage yards for large items, equipment or vehicles.
Which is this definition we have here. So that's the one without outdoor access, which wants to go here. So if we wanted to add the.
I think it either probably needs to include all or none because I think you're down running the risk of deciding whether that leaves the others as permitted uses or whether it falls under this.
Okay. I don't have a, this is really bad.
I agree.
So we agreed to, what we're talking about is amending the current motion to include two definitions, one for the indoor type facility and one for the outdoor type facility. So much of the, more or less, you think?
That's, that's where I think it would just remove the.
Any other discussion on that? Ambig, ambiguity?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So you know, we did this last time, you guys did it. So how do we amend the motion? How do we amend the motion?
Well, we have to have a motion to amend the motion currently and we'll vote on the amendment.
Okay. Anybody want to?
Would it be easier to strike the due?
If we have to vote.
No, because you already have a motion.
What?
You already have a motion, so you haven't made another motion.
Has to be voted up or down or amended.
So Kim, what would you like to do? Do you like to amend the motion or would you like to go and take a vote on this one?
I would like to amend the motion.
Okay.
To include.
So we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna make a pregnant motion. So we're gonna have, we're gonna make a, a motion to amend the motion, right?
Correct.
Who's making that motion? Kim?
I'll make that motion.
Kim. To include two definitions, one for the indoor facility, one for the outdoor facility. Okay?
I'll second that.
I'll second that, Jim. Okay, any other discussion on that? All those in favor of amending the current motion to include two definitions for self-storage, for self-storage facilities, indoor and outdoor, to separate those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. So we have amended the motion. Okay? The motion on the table is to move many storage buildings from permitted uses to conditional uses, change the term many storage buildings to self-storage facilities, and then amend section two point two to include two definitions for self-storage facility, one that's stated by Brady regarding indoor, and then one that's presented here, or that we've talked, we've been talking about, which is the outdoor. Okay? Any further discussion before we take a vote? All right. All those in favor of making recommendations to city coun, to the city council, to the following changes that we talked about, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We will get that written up in the form of an ordinance and get that to the city council and see what their thoughts are in regards to that. Okay? Appreciate the discussion, thank everybody for that. All right. Any other discussions? Uh, to announcements, announcements need to be made. If not, we will adjourn at seven fifty PM. Thank you for your time.